Well, good evening. I am Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor of Temecula, and I'm happy to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. So first, we are going to start with the invocation, and that will be presented by Erin Adams, so we'll stand for that. And then I will be leading the flag salute, and that will be followed by the roll call. So if you please stand for the invocation.
Good evening all. Would you please bow your head with me? Giverly Father, Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the privilege of convening here at City Hall. We give you thanks as a governing body to conduct the work of the City of Temecula. We ask for wisdom and discernment for the City Council in conducting tonight's meeting. Lord, I just pray for protection for city staff, for our police and fire personnel. Lord, you just keep them out of harm's way and safe and healthy. And we lift up our first responders in the hospitals and the schools and stuff too. Lord bless this evening. We consider it a privilege to live and work and play in the City of Temecula. And we ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Erin. If you please put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. And Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Thank you. So I have one announcement to make, and that is... Let me get back to it. The last item on the agenda is going to be taken off the agenda by Councilmember Alexander because she's spoken with people and they have decided to work on this using private property. Is that correct? Okay, so the item that says items for future city council agendas will not be discussed this evening. So we will move right on with the board and commission reports. And Mr. Watts, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Let's see, let's get this thing up. Do we have a PowerPoint? There we go. So at our September 1, I don't think we had a September 1 meeting. It was October last week, so whatever day that was. We approved a development plan for the construction of an approximately, let's say, a little less than 40,000 square foot industrial building to be located at the southwest corner of Winchester Road and Remington Avenue. We had no public comments on the item, and the commission voted unanimously to approve the application. So once again, we're seeing more building development in the industrial area, and that's wonderful for the city. So, next slide, please. We also approved a conditional use permit for a banquet and event facility that sells beer, wine, and distilled spirits and offers live entertainment at an existing building, which used to be the Ballast Point Restaurant and before that Captain's Cabin. That's located on Rancho California Road west of Old Town Front Street. So that's going to be... There were no public comments, and we approved the item unanimously. And that's going to be a nice facility for weddings, banquets, sports, gatherings, that type of thing. So we were really pleased to see that, and we hope that they have success with their new business. So I think that's it. I don't think there's any more. So, any questions? Probably not. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. And now we're going on to the ready commission, and that would be Chairman Tiffany Baker. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Well, we have very full meeting. There was only one agenda item, but we received a presentation, and I want to give a staff shout-out to Brandon from the Community Service Development Department. He gave us a housing presentation. He knew his stuff. He represented the city well. He was well-informed, and it gave us a wonderful dialogue. And these are some of the things that came out of that conversation. He presented to us, and first we want to make the public aware that the feedback we're giving, it's on the sixth cycle of the Housing Element Program. And some of the general topics we discussed amongst the commission included rental assistance to bridge gaps, also senior and transitional housing, streamlining processes for ADUs. We also discussed the timing of housing development in Old Town, trust, doing housing trusts to, for multi-generational wealth. We talked about veterans housing, changing zoning incentives to retain homes to build generational wealth again, and federal efforts to change the category for the income levels. So we had a diverse group of conversation and a lot of robust conversation, and ultimately the ability for the public to understand the programs and the language is better. So they'll understand what our roles are as a city, and what we have the ability to help, and what we can't, and that's why we liked his presentation. He was very knowledgeable to let us know some things we can do and some things we can't. So that was a great presentation. Our next meeting is canceled for November 11th in honor of Veterans Day. So I'm really excited about what we're going to do there, but we also will have a special meeting on November 16th. And last but not least, I was a part of a competition. And we, as the ready commission, participated in the Lunch Challenge for Habitat for Humanity. And guess what? We had Councilmember Ron and Councilmember Schwank were present in our meeting, but Councilmember Ron dropped in. So can we roll the tape? We have proof.
All right. You rolling? All right. Hey, I'm Eric with Habitat for Humanity. We're about to do our Lunch for Lumber Challenge. I am challenging the ready commission. And here we go. We're about to get started. All right. Ready? One. Two. Three. Four. Five.
Okay, I'm done right there.
Woo-hoo! Come on! Yeah!
Pat, you're totally out of sync, completely out of sync.
Let me start my commission!
Let's just clarify, Mayor Pro Tem Ron thought they said the lunch challenge.
Yeah, I was down for the lunch challenge. Lun, she had to enunciate.
Not the lunch challenge.
You did very well, and we were glad to do it. So that concludes our report, and thank you, because ready really enjoyed participating.
Thank you, Tiffany. And you challenged Community Services Commission.
Yes, yes, we did.
Oh, okay, they've thrown it down now. Pat, you can try again, but just try to get in sync, okay? You were completely...
I'm the white guy that has no coordination.
Yeah, that's okay. So, yes, thank you very much. All right. Captain Zach Hall for Public Safety Report, thank you. And I noticed you weren't in the lunch challenge. Were you someplace participating in the lunch challenge?
I have no idea, ma'am. I was still trying to catch up here. All right. I've changed up the report a little bit to give you a little more information on kind of how we conduct business over at the station, and how we track crime trends, and how we report these numbers. So a few of these slides will look the same, and again, as always, if you have questions or want different information in the report, I'm happy to do it. The calls for service we have year-to-date, 2021 is 62,920 to 60,880 in 2020. Our month of September, 16, or 6,716. The next slide covers the average response times. Not much change here. You can see our priority ones moved up to seven minutes for 2021 and were 6.94 in September of 2020. And then priority two, we did see a pretty significant increase there from seven, to 17 from 13. Priority threes and fours have remained pretty steady. Moving on to the next slide is our Part One Crimes. I'm actually going to skip over this because I want to move to the next slide, which shows our comparisons. So if you go to the next slide, so if you look at this one, this is kind of how we track these Part One crimes. And it helps us keep an eye on our comparisons as we move through the month and then our year-to-date. So on the left side of this, you'll see the Part One crimes listed, same as on the other slide. And then as you move across, in this first box, you'll see the September comparison, the first to the 12th, the 13th to the 24th, the 25th through the 30th. And you'll see, as we progress through the month, you'll see like, for example, we'll go with robbery. Between the first and the 12th, we had four. Between the 13th and the 24th, it reduced to one, a 75% decrease. And then from the 25th to the 30th, we had zero. Now, these are kind of small numbers, so you'll see, you know, 100% decrease, but that's in that timeframe. So it helps us identify crime trends, maybe what we should look at, where we should redeploy resources, what we need to look into, what our detectives are doing. Are these serial crimes? Do we have an opportunistic criminal or criminal group that's starting to plague the city in a certain area? And then farther on the right of that, you'll see the year-to-date data, which is everything that I generally present on the first slide. Now, they really don't change from month to month, but it is nice to track that. It's more important to me to see how these numbers fluctuate every couple weeks or every week. You'll also see it breaks down our violent crimes to our theft crimes. So these are the majority of the main crimes we track to kind of gauge how the health of the city from a public safety standpoint. If you go to the next slide, every 24 hours this is produced for the 24 hours before that, and these are Part One crimes, which are the same ones that were laid out in the two additional slides that I share with in city council meetings. So every morning, when the deputies come to work, management comes to work, detectives, special teams, they're provided this, one of these. Now, the addresses are removed, and there's a little bit of information that's taken out of this, so it's acceptable for public consumption. But essentially, it lays out the major crimes that occurred in the city within the 24 hours prior. And it kind of acts as a report card for the deputies that worked the day before, for incoming detectives, incoming special teams, our crime analysts to look at to try to identify crime trends. Sometimes we'll see where there's these, this little legend up in the side, you'll see a little house, and it's multiple houses in the same area. And then you can say, well, there's a serial crime here, an opportunistic criminal, something's going on, maybe it's become a soft spot, people are leaving stuff in their cars, leaving their garages open, parcel theft. And it gives us real-time crime data to then respond to and to try to get in front of to keep something from getting out of control. And so I just wanted to kind of give you that overview, kind of a look behind the scenes on how we respond and deploy resources based on crime data that's in as real-time as we can possibly get it.
Wow.
So now I'm willing to go back to any slide and answer questions or go over any of those numbers, but I can email you this too. I just wanted you to know that this is one of the ways we use data to drive our deployments, and like I said, as much as real-time as possible.
Stu, you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. So I noticed the assault map. It looked like the assaults are taking place around the mall and possibly around Great Oak High School. Is that, is that where, because it looks like the fist is right about where the mall is, and the other fist is, looks like right where Great Oak is. Is that, is that something, you see a trend? Is that something that we have issues with, the mall and around the high school there?
Well, generally, where people gather, you're going to see those kinds of things, right? They can be, an assault can be throwing an item at somebody, actually hitting somebody, pushing somebody. So yes, high schools are notorious for minor assaults. The mall, you're going to have a lot of high school kids that gather there. You're going to see some degree of assaults. Old Town Temecula, where there's bars and a lot of people coming together, you're going to see assaults. So yes, that is very typical of those types of areas.
Could you go back to, there's, the slide we actually skipped? Go back to that one.
The Part One Crimes?
Uh, no, actually, go to the one, the next one forward. Okay, that's another thing that I'm kind of interested in. It says 2021 year-to-date Part One Crimes is up by 9.5%?
Correct.
Okay. And so, and those include, it looks like rape year-to-date is 19?
Okay, so here's, we just did an analysis of this because I found this number to be, you know, in my position, a little shocking as well.
Right.
Here's the issue with some of this data. Because I'm providing it to you in real-time, I'm not providing to you two years from now, a year from now, after all these cases have been fully investigated, as soon, is, this is all raw data. So these are reported crimes as they stand now. A majority of these rape cases are still in an investigative stage. Over time, that number will decrease. If we went back, like, 2019 data is complete. So you have, that is, out of that year, that's the final number of cases that were complete that actually turned out to be rape cases. 2020, that data, those cases are probably not closed yet. I would expect that number to come down as well. Now, currently, you have 29, uh, sorry, 19 reported cases. As we close those cases, as we unfound those cases, as we learn those cases occurred in other jurisdictions, that number will come down as well.
Another question about the larceny theft. What exactly is that? And it's up like almost 15%?
That's your petty thefts and your grand thefts. Yes, that's going to be, in Temecula, that is what drives our crime stats, is our theft crimes. We, our, our crime, our crime value, what, you know, dictates how safe your city is and how you get raided, is driven by Part One crimes. Each one of these crimes carries the exact same weight, which is a problem with the system we've discussed before. A theft of a lawn flamingo carries the same weight as getting robbed at the ATM. And we would all assign a different value to that crime. But here, we have the casino, we have Old Town, we have the auto mall, we have a huge mall. Every one of those shopliftings, petty thefts, grand thefts are all included in that number.
Okay, that's it?
Quick question, just kind of piggyback off what Stu was talking about. Is that also, as we're looking at laws from the state as far as, what is it, $900, people can basically go into a store, gank $900 worth of...
$949.
$949 and walk out of it, well, basically walk out without really having a repercussion? Could that also be driving up the larceny as well?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
We are watching those, though, because at $949, it's a misdemeanor. And if, but if they go into the store with the intent of committing that crime, if they go in with arms-loaded empty bags, or maybe in a, you know, a wave of people, then that's a felony. So they are watching that very closely.
That's correct. Intent changes that from a petty theft, a shoplifting, to a burglary. And a burglary is still a felony in California.
Well, thank goodness for something. All of them have changed so much. Thank you, Captain Hall. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Nope? All right. So, public comments on non-agenda items, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have a few. If you would like to read the rules?
All right. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Okay, could we have our first speaker, please?
Yes, the first speaker is Kristi Nocia, followed by Bob Cowell.
Hi, Kristi.
Hi, my name is Kristi, and I'm with Hospice of the Valleys. And I usually like to come this time of year for a few reasons. First, next month, November, is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. So we want to raise awareness, let people know that we're here, and we're here to help those with life-limiting illnesses. Next thing, the second thing that I really want to share is our gratitude at Hospice of the Valleys for the grant that you continue to provide to us yearly. We appreciate it so much. It augments the finances so that we can continue to provide excellent hospice care to our community. We are a nonprofit. We started right here in this valley in 1982. We're local. We have a board made up of citizens here in the community, and we're proud, really proud, to provide service to Temecula. We use that grant money for a lot of different things. But one of the things is the Five Wishes program, where we do a lot of community outreach, teaching people and sharing with them how they can make plans with their family and their advance directives. And then also, the one that I'm most proud of, that really your grant money helped so much, is to be able to give our veteran patients this wonderful booklet to help them kind of, their needs are different. Veterans' end-of-life needs are different, and this helps kind of lay the groundwork for that, and it helps our staff as well as the patients and families kind of come to terms with the things that our veterans have gone through. That, the money also helped with continuing to keep our level of service above and beyond. And so I'm really proud that we just found out again that we've been awarded the Hospice Elite Status, which is a set of criteria that Medicare sends out a survey to all of our patients' families after the patient has passed. This is a nationwide survey that goes out. There's 24 questions that are given to that family, from the type of care they received, were they treated with dignity and respect, and so on. And Hospice of the Valleys is the only hospice in the whole state of California that received that elite status. And we're so proud of that because this was COVID. We went through COVID like everyone went through COVID, and it was really a hard, hard on our families, on our patients, and also on our staff, and the nurses, and our physicians. So I just want to, again, thank you for your continued support, and, and I really appreciate being able to share that good news with you.
Thank you, Kristi. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're honored to have Hospice of the Valleys serving our residents, so thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Mary Ann Tams.
Mr. Cowell, good evening.
Hello. Hi there. We're usually on the street corner for, you know, Trump rallies for a long time. We did, first Friday of every month was four to six o'clock. We're going to change it to Let's Go Brandon rally, so. With that, it's be with signs that say, "Parents' Choice for Your Child in School." Vaccination is not mandatory. Businesses should be able to stay open, not require their, their people to get vaccinated. That should be mandatory in our city, that, and our cities, meaning this particular area is Temecula Valley. I'm in Marietta, however, at one point I was in the city, it was Rancho, California. It was before this was a city, and Marietta was a city. So I feel part of Temecula as I do Marietta, so. Please come out to the rallies. There are four to six on Friday afternoon. Let's Go Brandon. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Ann Tams, to be followed by John Roush.
Hello.
Hi, Mayor and everyone else on the council. I'm Mary Ann Tams, and I'm the Garden Director for Cultivating Inclusion. It's a community farming project, and this is my daughter, Kateri. Did you want to say hello?
Hello.
And then you say?
My, my name is Kateri Zamastel. I'm 24 years old.
And I go to work?
I go to work.
With CareRight?
With CareRight.
We go to job sites?
We go to job sites.
On Monday?
On Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
With my friends?
With my friends.
Okay. Yes, thanks, Kateri. And that's what we're about. We are about a, we're a job site location for day programs, which are funded by the Inland Regional Center of Riverside County. And we, we work with CareRight, who's located in Temecula and towards maximum independence. We give food also. We gave nearly 5,000 pounds so far of produce to the various food banks in the local area, Community Mission of Hope, St. Vincent de Paul, and the Western Eagle Foundation. So we kind of have the kids come in the daytime because special needs adults, these are all people that are out of the school district, okay? We are getting some of the school district kids, but they're out of high school. I should say they graduated from high school. And so we get kids from Marietta and Temecula, and they just come for an hour or so to the farm, which is located in Marietta. They, they come there, and we teach them, we guide them through planting, the seeds, harvesting, and we pick the stuff, and we have a great time, we have a lot of fun, and then we have a snack. And if we have time, and we try to make time, we play bingo, because that way you're going to win something. Somebody's going to win something. And we thoroughly enjoy this experience. And I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Stacy Brown for helping me recently and getting our name out there for volunteers on the City of Temecula page, because we need volunteers. So if you have a few minutes, a couple of hours a week, we'd love to have you up there. Okay, thank you for listening. We appreciate it. Well, thank you, and thank you for the wonderful service.
The next speaker is John Roush, to be followed by our last speaker on non-agenda items, Bob Quaid.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm John Roush. I'm with Community Mission of Hope, also very soon to be with also Rancho Damocedus. We have a merger that's near done there. So I have, I've brought my good friend, Gary Adi. We are partnering up with Bike Temecula, and we're going to be having an event on Sunday, November the 21st. We'd like to invite everyone out who is a bicycle enthusiast, from a fun ride to someone who may want to do a 50-miler. So we're going to be doing that event. I don't know if you want to say a few words about that at all, Gary?
Sure. Yeah. Well, for Bike Temecula Valley, we're just so excited to be invited to work on this collaboration with Community Mission of Hope and Rancho Damocedus. Just a great community event, and this, and the city's giving us a lot of support on it. We left a flyer for all of you and the council and the staff, and I think we'd love to see all of the council out there, but I think John is going to have a formal invitation right here when I step aside. But again, Bike Temecula Valley is so excited about being in this event. This is our first big event. We expect it to be an annual event, and we expect to be doing a lot, lot more in the City of Temecula as we progress towards being a real bike town.
Thank you. One, one last point on that Sunday, and you all are personally invited. Even if you have an EV bike, we're welcoming all kinds of cyclists. As some of you may know, Dan Atwood, a wonderful, wonderful man, made it possible for Community Mission of Hope's building to, actually 10 days before Christmas last December, he came over and said, "You guys might as well just take this building." And what a gift. city of Temecula as we progress towards being a real bike town.
Thank you. One, one last point on that Sunday, and you all are personally invited. Even if you have an EV bike, we're welcoming all kinds of cyclists. As some of you may know, Dan Atwood, a wonderful, wonderful man, made it possible for Community Mission of Hope's building to, actually 10 days before Christmas last December, he came over and said, "You guys might as well just take this building." And what a gift, and what a gift his life was. And so we've renamed the building the Dan Atwood Center for Hope. And Mayor would invite you and anyone else from council to come, because on that day we're going to celebrate that and commemorate the building at that time, so.
So it's the 21st of November.
It is. The, the first ride will be a 50-miler. That will start at 8:00 AM. 8:30 will be what we call an intermediate ride. It's going to be about 18 miles. And then the, the family fun ride will be around 1:30, when, after most churches and other things have kind of broken free. So we'll hopefully have a lot of different people out there throughout the day. Kind of be a festival activity in time, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing Dan Atwood, a great friend of Temecula.
Absolutely. Have a good evening.
And our last speaker on non-adjourned items is Bob Quaid.
Mr. Quaid, how are you?
I'm doing great, Madam Mayor, Mary Ann, and honorable members of the council. The 9/11 memorial, the Holocaust museum, the grave to the unknown soldier. All three of those memorials have a purpose. They help, help us to remember the dead, they help hearts to heal, and they also help us to remember the evil that caused their deaths. Now, I came to the council a couple of weeks ago, and I presented this petition, and I've got a lot more signatures, but I asked Councilwoman Alexander to pull that from the agenda, because I just wanted to tell you that we have decided, a group of us, that probably, this would probably be a better project if we went pub, uh, private with it. We didn't want any of the council members to feel conflicted with maybe their devotion to God and their responsibility as a councilperson serving in a state where they think it's still okay to kill a baby in the third trimester. So we have decided that we're going to move in that direction. But I do want to say that I spoke with a woman coming over here today who went to a women's conference. She said that over 40% of the women that attended that conference had had an abortion. Now, translate that into a city of 100,000, over 100,000 in Temecula. There may be 40,000 women that have had an abortion in the city. Those women, those husbands, those families need a place to come and remember those lost children, and to have their hearts healed and to pray to God. They need a place for sanctuary, and that's what we're trying to do. So even though I'm taking this private now, I may be back, but I, I may need your approval on something. So I'm just putting that out there, and I want to thank you for at least hearing me out at this point. Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Madam Mayor, that's the last of the public comments on non-adjourned items.
Okay, so we can move on to city council reports, and I'm going to take mayor's liberty and go first because of an event that was held last week. The city council approved an event, well, first let me back up. Last spring, we made the decision to put up white flags at the Duck Pond to honor persons in the city of Temecula who had passed away from the COVID virus. And these flags were ordered by family members, and they included the names of the deceased person, because so many people were suffering with a huge loss, and some families lost more than one person tragically. So when the flags were removed in about mid-September or so, we said that we were going to hold a ceremony and present those flags to those family members in honor of their loved one who had passed away because of COVID. So that event was held on October 21st, right out here in front of City Hall. And when I came out of the building to begin the event with council member, Schwenk was there, council member Stewart was there, and the city staff was there, and it was, the moderator, the emcee, was Aaron Adams, who did a wonderful job in a very, very sensitive environment. I was stunned to see probably 300 or 350 people sitting in the chairs that staff had set up for them. So it was a very somber, yet at the same time, very uplifting ceremony, as Aaron called the names of the per, the name of the person who was on the flag, the deceased person, and that family would come forward. And we had cheers and hugs and many, many tears for remembrance. And so many people that came through that line talked about the fact that they had not had the opportunity to visit their loved one in the hospital because of COVID. They had no chance to say goodbye. They had no chance to make amends where that would have been appropriate. And in many, many cases, the burials for their loved ones did not take place, because there were so many of them in the county and all across, well, throughout the United States, all across Southern California. One woman relayed that her sister had died in Ju, July of 2020, and had just been buried last month in September of 2021. That's how much the backup was because of the tragic volume, the numbers of lives lost. So it was a night of healing for many and a night to finally start that process of closure. But you know, in cases like this, there can never really truly be closure. You know, you will always remember your loved one, but as time goes on, the pain turns to fond memories and memories of happier times, and that's what we wish for those people. It was very moving for all of us who were able to participate, and I just want to thank those families who came out and allowed us to be part of that very personal tragedy in their families, and to hopefully let them know that we love them and we feel what they're feeling. We know it's been very difficult for everyone the last couple of years, but especially for these families. So thank you to the Temecula residents who are so understanding when the flags went up. I received many, many positive emails, and I've received emails since the ceremony last week from people saying how they appreciated it, and for the first time they felt like they could move forward and still remember their loved one with, with happy memories. So, and Zach, I know you wanted to comment because you were there too, and it was so very, very moving.
It was. So thank you for those words just now. I think you really summed it up quite well. It was difficult that night for me to even, you know, speak to the, to the group, trying to process everything that we've dealt with in the last 18 months or so. And even tonight, honestly, just the range of emotions, words can't really describe what it was like shaking a hand or giving a hug or, or just a, an embrace, or just being there, right, for our community. Just the fact that we were there, just being there for our community, I think speaks volumes. Families came up twice. There were, there were families that came up twice to receive two flags. Extremely thankful, grateful for the city for doing that, for acknowledging, for just being there, again, for caring. We heard that over and over. Closure, this was the start of closure for many, many families. I think dealing with what we've dealt with over the last, again, 18 months has been difficult for families to not have like a traditional closure when a loved one passes. It's, this is certainly outside of the normal routine for a family. So I, I think it meant a lot to the families that were there. And, and our city manager, I think he did a beautiful job of reading off the 97 names of people in Temecula, and I think the families appreciated that. I know I appreciated that. It means a lot to me, and I know it meant a lot to the community. We heard a lot of, "Thank you, I can't believe you're doing this, thank you, this means so much to our family." Again, it gave folks a lot of closure, so. It was, it was a very powerful event, so I can leave it at that. Thank you.
You know, we serve on this council because we love our city and we love our residents, but it is, having the opportunity to honor them as we did that night, that makes everything worthwhile. We love our residents. We want them to be able to move forward and to have happy memories. And I encouraged any of them to contact City Hall, or call me, or email me, or any of the council members, if there's anything we could do to help. So if you know someone who lost a loved one through COVID, or if you yourself have lost a loved one through COVID, just know that our collective hearts go out to you, and we remember, and, and we're here for you if you need us. So thank you. I have Stu. Do you have a presentation?
Yes. Go ahead and put the slide up. So the last three weeks, so this is actually the third one, tomorrow night, we're doing a, a financial literacy series, which I believe tonight is, uh, not tonight, tomorrow night, is investing. What do you do with your money to get yourself to retirement and, and make those steps necessary to, to secure your future? And so it's been kind of building steam. Each week we get a few more people, so if you're in that state of mind where you want to get a little better handle on your finances, tomorrow night at the, the Old City Hall, which is right off of, right back in the industrial park.
Business Park Drive.
Business Park Drive. We're going to have that series. So it's 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We, we don't go all the way to 7:00. It's like 5:00 to 6:00, 6:30 at, at the most. But it, it's been a good series to kind of wrap your head around what to do financially as you're moving forward, so. Thank you.
So thank you. Did you ask anything?
I just want to make a quick announcement of what happened this weekend. I know some of us know that there was a, a 2001, the first one for the Run Walk for, for Life over here at Linfield. And so I just want to kind of give a little shout out to Birth Choice, not only because I work for them, but just what I saw over the weekend, what a great experience Temecula residents in the valley were able to have. Thanks to Linfield Christian and Temecula Grind, they were able to donate things to be able to help us out, along with Timmy D's. Many of the churches in the area were able to contribute as well. We had over 50 volunteers there for a 5K, and we had over 250 individuals show up for that, and that was even during soccer and all that other stuff in the middle. But for the first one, I just want to say, it is, it's a hard time on those Saturdays, but I just want to thank all the individuals who came out for Temec, in Temecula and beyond to help out, to really blow it up. We had great contributions. I don't want to get into prices, but it was beyond measure of what I think Birth Choice want, was even expecting. So thank you for the support, all of you, even thank you for the city, because you guys had a little bit of help in the beginning, just to kind of get that through. So thank you very much.
Yeah, so I do have a slide, but before we get to the slide, after our last meeting, we had State of the City, which the year, last year, we had a virtual one, which isn't quite the same. Attending that always makes me proud. It genuinely does. You see the things that we do as a city. So I just encourage residents to check out our YouTube page or our social media. We posted snippets of those videos. A lot of great things happening in the city over the last year and, and on it in the next year, so. We can throw up the slide now. Okay, so I wanted to highlight some bike businesses that have come to town. So Old Town Bicycle Company has opened up here just south of the arch here in Old Town. And then Borrow Our Bikes is actually a bike rental business that operates out of Wine Country, and they opened up a shop here, a rental spot here at Pretty Paints over on Sixth, I believe.
Are they motorized?
Uh, yeah, they're e-bikes.
Ooh-hoo.
Yeah, so we can get you one for the bike ride. And then the middle picture, we did a tour with Pedago Electric Bikes. They're looking to come back to Temecula and open up a shop. The reason I bring this up is the Marietta Creek Trail, the Santa Grotuitas Interconnect, those are two large infrastructure projects that really facilitate these sorts of businesses that come here. You have to be a bike community, have access to trails for businesses to come, and that's just one of those things that we're doing as we grow and as we expand. Those, I've been getting pinged a little bit on social media about those two projects specifically. We're looking at the end of the year for the Marietta Creek path to open up behind Old Town, which would be great. That'll connect up onto the Diaz Trail, affectionately known as the AL Trail, and then on into Santa Grotuitas Interconnect, which will connect obviously all the way out to Somers Bend, so. Just really wanted to highlight those businesses and those trail connections. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item number two, approve action minutes of October 12th, 2021. Item number three, approve list of demands. Item number four, approve city treasurer's report as of July 31st, 2021. Item number five, approve financial statements for the fourth quarter ended June 30th, 2021. Item number six, rescind the current vehicle policy and approve the city vehicle and driver safety policy. Number seven, approve sponsorship agreement with Trauma Intervention Program of Southwest Riverside County, Inc., for trauma incident citizen support. Number eight, authorize the purchase of industrial switches for the fiber optic communication system upgrade project PW 1805. Number nine, approve agreement with Gosh Ford Temecula for the purchase of four 2021 Ford Ranger four-by-four XL trucks. Number 10, award construction contract to Adam Engineering Construction, Inc., for the flood control reconstruction and repair project PW 11-10. Number 11, approve First Amendment to the Minor Maintenance Agreement for Landscape Maintenance Services with Neve's Landscape, Inc. Number 12, receive and file temporary street closures for 2021 Winterfest events. Okay, I will take a motion.
I'll move consent.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. And let's vote. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. So I am going to recess this Temecula City Council meeting to the Temecula Community Services District meeting with President Zach Schwank.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we're all still in attendance. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
I think so. Go ahead and dispense with the reading of those rules, and we'll move on to our consent calendar. I'm thinking about making a video for this one. Who was that Mike that did the videos?
Yeah, he did.
It's a whole, whole lot now. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number 13, approve action minutes of October 12th, 2021. Item number 14, approve financial statements for fourth quarter ended June 30, 2021. And item number 15, approve First Amendment with TNT Entertainment Group, LLC for additional entertainment and technical services. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Okay, and that passes 5-0. Do we have a director's report this evening? Director Russo?
Yes. Excuse me, yes, Mr. President, we do. So just two quick items I'd like to go over. The first one is just a reminder of our community blood drives. This past week, we heard from our local hospital, Temecula Valley Hospital, that there is a regional blood shortage, and that's affecting everyone, including our local hospital. So we just wanted to remind the community that we do have monthly blood drives with Red Cross. Those are, the upcoming dates are Friday, November 12th, Friday, December 17th, and Friday, January 7th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We did notice that during the height of the pandemic, we were getting 100% of the slots available were booked, but recently it's been more about 75%. So we just want to encourage everybody to consider getting out there and donating blood. You can go ahead and register at redcross.org. They make it very simple to find the location, even if you don't want to come to one of ours, there are many throughout the region. And you can go ahead and complete the registration online, and then go and help be a hero. And next slide, please. Second slide, of course, is I just wanted to remind everybody that Southern California's premier car show is rolling back into town on Friday, November 5th. We'll be having the cruise night from 5:00 to 8:00 PM here in Old Town. And then the Show and Shine will be Saturday, November 6. And then the Show and Shine will be Saturday, November sixth, from nine to four, nine A M. to four P M. We're thrilled to have the event back in Old Town. As you know, uh, the last couple of years have kind of, um, not, not been ideal for this event, and we're really excited to bring it back in all of its glory. So, come on out and enjoy the fun. And following that, I'd just like to invite up two of our staff members. We have our Administrative Services Manager, Mike Wooton, as well as Staff Member Patrice Brown, and Representative from our contractor Swag, and they're going to provide some information for us on the latest homeless outreach activities.
Good evening, Mister, uh, Mister President, Madam Mayor, fellow members of the board. Uh, as Eric Russo pointed out on Mike Wooton, this is Senior Rec Leader Patrice Brown, and Representative Swag is Jerry Hovey. Uh, appear to make us look short, of course.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, updated report for the month of September. Um, there were a total of eleven new clients that completed intakes with Swag. Uh, we had a fifteen actual street exits for the month. Uh, you will see there that that did include a family of ten, however, and, uh, Patrice will get into some information about that and how we were able to work with some of our partnering agencies. Um, we had no, uh, returns to the street this, uh, for the month of September, so that's good. Uh, so for the year, uh, we've had a total of sixty street exits through September. Uh, we're up a little bit more now through, uh, as we're getting towards the end of October, and we'll have those for the next report. Uh, we removed, or through Public Works, their contractor, there were thirteen illegal encampments removed, so bringing that total to over sixty. And the reason that shows sixty-plus is we really started tracking that in March. Uh, so we have a unofficial number before that. So, um, you know, after this year, we'll have, you know, exact amounts, uh, for year-to-date totals. Uh, we didn't have any, uh, C D B G funding for the month of September, but we have started reaching out to some of the different organizations, Project Touch and some other, uh, housing providers to, to start promoting it, to, to hopefully help out some people. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna let Patrice go over some success stories that we've had for the month.
Hello, so on Friday, nine seventeen, in collaboration with the Community Mission of Hope, city staff was able to help a Temecula family of ten, two adults, eight children, who were recently evicted and needed help getting transportation to Alabama to move in with family. After meeting with the family, staff reached out to Temecula Rotary Club, who was so gracious to provide five hundred dollars in gas cards to the family. C M O H. was able to match the same amount in gas cards. A great team effort. On Friday, nine twenty-four, Swag was able to get a Temecula resident who has been homeless in Temecula for multiple years checked into a residential drug treatment program. Swag has been in daily communication with this person to encourage, assist, and offer support. They also provided transportation for the client. This client has backed out of opportunities to get treatment in the past, so this is a big step for him to follow through with entering the program this time. On Tuesday, nine twenty-one, city staff accompanied Deputy Kennedy from the Hot Team as he responded to a call for service for a transient who was with deputies from the Metro Team. The individual expressed interest in working with Swag and getting off the streets, so P D. transported the individual to the Help Center, where Swag was able to accept him into, was able to get him accepted into housing with Project Touch. The client was very thankful and even stopped by the next week to let us know that he was doing well and taking steps to secure employment.
So, that concludes our report, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. It's lovely to hear those success stories and see all the good work pay off. Directors, anything? Yeah, go ahead.
So, has there been any talk of doing blood drives other than Friday?
Um, yes, we've actually booked into twenty twenty-two, and in twenty twenty-two, they're on other days as well. It's just the next three happen to be on Fridays.
Okay, alright.
Great, thank you very much. Alright. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Directors, anything else?
Nope.
Alright, I'll go ahead and move adjournment to our next, uh, regularly scheduled meeting, November ninth. We're adjourned.
Thank you. So, I will call to order this meeting of the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. And could we have the roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, we are noting that you are all present.
Okay, thank you. So, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public.
Alright, no Sarda public comments. Um, so we'll go on to the Consent Calendar. Do I need to read the disclaimer again? Yes, says Peter, okay. This is how we get to memorize it, so, yes, repetition. All matters listed in our Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on items that appear on the Consent Calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to the councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for the in-person comments will be called in the order received by the City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, and then, if time permits, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings adopted by Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One dash fifty-four. Item number sixteen, approve financial statements for the fourth quarter ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. So, I need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, let's vote. Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you. Mister Executive Director, anything?
Nothing further tonight.
And Board of Directors reports, anything?
Nothing.
Then we will adjourn the Sarda meeting and move on to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we're gonna move on to business item. Number seventeen, any member of the public may address the City Council on items that appear on the business portion of the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in order received by the City Clerk or Deputy City Clerk, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings adopted by Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One dash fifty-four. Item number seventeen, and it's a receive and file report on the Arrive at Rancho Highlands Project Planning Application Number P A nineteen dash one four four eight. And, good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, I'm gonna go ahead and kick this off.
Thank you, Luke.
Yes, uh, members of the Council as well. Uh, we're here tonight as a receiving file to talk about the Arrive at Rancho Highlands, uh, residential project. And this is a little bit of, um, well, not a little bit, it's a lot of a, of a, of a unique process for, um, how a project was, uh, processed and approved. Um, and we have staff here tonight, uh, with the Planning Department, Public Works Department, to go through the project itself. We'll take a look at, you know, what is actually approved, um, the timelines for that, um, but we're also gonna talk about the uniqueness of the process and how that came to be. So, to do that, I think the first place we want to start is with the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, which is, um, this project is the first of its kind to be approved under the state mandated program. Um, the, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone was adopted in two thousand and eighteen as part of the city's required fifth cycle, uh, housing element. I know we just, uh, you, the Council just approved the sixth cycle housing element. So, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone was a requirement of our current, or what we'll soon be calling our previous housing cycle. And the, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone was a state mandated housing element, um, program, which the state determined is designated to expedite production of market rate and affordable housing. Um, the Affordable Housing Overlay Overlay Zone, of course, is a compulsory program. It's actually housing program number one in our current or fifth cycle housing element, and was required, uh, uh, as a part of housing, uh, the state of, the state of California's Housing and Community Development Review and approval of that housing element. And of course, uh, that's all with an eye towards meeting, uh, the city's regional housing need assessment over that period. So, what does the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone allow that is different from what would be normally required? Well, first, um, all projects that come in under the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone are permitted by right and be shall, and shall be ministerially approved, which is very much different than most or all residential developments of this size and scope. Typically, a project would be required to come in and go through, uh, extensive, uh, public hearing process with the City Council, as well as the Planning Commission and any other body that would be necessary. Um, under the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, that's not required. And not only is it not required, it's not permitted. I think that's a better way to put it. Uh, the, the city is not permitted to require any public hearings. Um, additionally, under the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, no SEQA review is required. So typically, a typical project would have to, uh, study the impacts of the project and then provide for mitigation. Um, you know, the, the highest profile of those types of mitigation, of course, is traffic impacts and traffic mitigation. Um, for better or worse, the state has decided that that's not necessary for projects under this program, and so SEQA review was not required. Um, again, uh, uh, just to reiterate, uh, the, the city was not, uh, permitted to hold any public hearings on this process, or on this project, and it's already been approved ministerially. Um, and, and so that's why we're here tonight, because it's already been approved. Um, one thing that is kind of, uh, uh, more of a limitation on projects that are done under the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone is, uh, a typical project has, uh, up to five years, which includes extensions for the entitlement to be, uh, good essentially, so valid. Under the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, um, the project has three years to commence construction, or that approval is then, uh, expires. So, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Scott Cooper, who's, uh, our planner in our, our Plan Department, who's a project manager. Did an excellent job getting everything the city could get out of this project, uh, you know, in the face of considerable limitations. He's gonna take us through the actual project.
Right, thank you, Mister Deputy City Manager. Uh, the project location, as I think many of us know, is located, uh, directly adjacent to the Duck, Duck Pond on the north side of Inez Road. Little bit of information about the project, it is a two hundred and seventy-unit multifamily community that includes the fifty-five affordable units. It's on twelve point three-two acres and twenty-one point nine-two dwelling units per acre. Uh, again, there are fifty-four or fifty-five affordable units, and those are within three buildings on the project. There are twenty-six one-bedroom units, which are from six hundred and forty-five to six hundred and fifty-three square feet. There are fourteen two-bedroom units, which are from seven hundred and eighty-eight to eight hundred and twenty-six square feet, and fifteen three-bedroom units, which are a thousand and twenty-seven square feet. And those are just for the affordable units, which is the twenty percent requirement for the A H O Z. Here's the site plan. Uh, this shows where the fifty-five affordable units are. They're on the left side of the project. Uh, there is a gated entry to the project, and as I go through all these amenities, the amenities are for the entire project. It's not affordable amenities versus market rate amenities. It's one project in total. So, you have a barbecue area, um, a tot lot with a play structure, uh, a big central clubhouse that has your pool, your spa, your gym, a game area, outdoor kitchen, and then finally, a dog park, which we're seeing a lot of these multifamily commu- communities now. Terms of the elevations, uh, this would be your standard affordable, affordable building, and this would be your standard market rate building. So, there was a separate architect for the affordable and a separate one for the market rate. Uh, staff worked with the architects to try to get the buildings to look as close as possible. Um, I think you can see it'd be pretty hard to differentiate between the two buildings throughout a project. This is the clubhouse, again, um, for all residents of the project, uh, located in the center. And then a couple of renderings. So, this is with, you were, uh, flying a drone up above Inez. Um, the first three buildings on the left over there are the affordable buildings, and then the rest are the market rate. And then this is a rendering, is if you were driving up into the project. So, again, you, the building right there on the left is affordable, building on the right is market rate. Can't tell the difference between the two of them. Now, this is the, the big thing that allows the city to get affordable units while also maintaining a minimum of twenty percent affordable units on the project site, which allows the developer to develop in this area. So, the fifty-five affordable unit shall be in place prior to or concurrent with the delivery of the market rate units, such that for every four units receiving certificate of occupancy on the market rate, there is at least one affordable unit that has received certificate of occupancy. So, at all times during construction of the project and occupancy, there will be twenty percent of affordable units. Uh, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the Director of Public Works to talk about, um, the Inez Road improvements.
Thanks, Scott. So, as you can see on the slide before you, the project site is labeled there in white, and even though there wasn't a SEQA review required for the project, the developer is still required to construct their frontage improvements. So, they're required to construct, uh, the full-width improvements of Inez Road across their frontage. So, that's the five hundred and fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-one feet that's shown there. Uh, the remainder of the Inez Road, uh, improvements are labeled as the expanded Inez Road improvements. That's the little over a thousand feet to extend that down to Rancho Vista Road. That's actually included in the city's C I P. program as a city project. So, that, that is something that, uh, that we would be working on. We're actually working on a, uh, member animal of understanding or M O U. with the developer to allow for both the, uh, frontage of the development, as well as the expanded improvements to be done as a single project. And you'll see that M O U. on your agenda on November ninth. Uh, and again, that would allow for those two projects to be done as one single project, uh, with the contribution from the developer and the city, uh, participating as well. And with that, uh, that would also expedite the, the construction for it to be done as one single project, rather than the developer doing their frontage and then the city doing a second project of that remainder of the improvements. So, you'll see that M O U. on your agenda on November ninth, and then we hope to be able to move forward with that as all one single project.
Well, thanks, Pat. Um, finishing up here, um, the project was presented to the City Council Ad hoc Infill Land Use and Project Review Subcommittee, um, which was Council Member Ron and former Council, Council Member Nagar, and that was on November twelfth of two thousand and nineteen, December tenth of two thousand and nineteen, and finally, on September twenty-first of two thousand and twenty. And then kind of how we got to where we are, um, the project was submitted November first of two thousand and nineteen. The project was reviewed for conformance with the Municipal Code, which includes the A H O Z., uh, the citywide design guidelines, and the Rancho Highlands specific plan. Um, per to the A H O Z., as Luke stated, SEQA was not required as part of the project review, and also per to the A H O Z., the public hearing was not required, as long as the project complied, complied with all the, uh, standards of the A H O Z., which obviously it did, project got approved. Project was administratively approved on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. And then, as, uh, Deputy City Manager also mentioned, it expires on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, with no extensions of time if construction has not commenced. Uh, to conclude, we'll turn it back over to the Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Scott. Um, so, I mean, we, we, we've gone through the project and, um, talked about, a little bit about the, the process, a- as well as, you know, what the project's going to produce. And even though the process was different this time around in terms of, of the hearings and, and no SEQA review, uh, the project was still required to comply with all development standards, as Pat was talking about. So, um, amenities on site, all setbacks, landscaping requirements, all those kinds of things were still required. And I think, considering everything, um, staff has done an, an excellent job of producing with the developer a, 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 an attractive project that is, um, that is meeting all the development standards within the program. Um, like I said, this is the first to utilize, this project's the first to utilize the A H O Z., so it's, um, we've all been learning as we've been going along, since it's such an unusual process. Um, uh, and we talked about the fact that it was administratively approved, and, um, one thing that was important for us to get in front of you, uh, quickly after the administrative approval is, as the grading permit for this project has been approved, they, um, that has been issued, and we expect that dirt could be moving on site as soon as tomorrow. So, um, we just wanted to make sure that this, this project was daylighted for the community, considering no pro, uh, no public hearings were required. Um, and just to, uh, make sure that there was disclosure and everybody knew what was going on, that the council knew what was going on, uh, that, uh, and the community knew what was going on, um, a- as they see some significant grading starting to take place on the site. So, with that, uh, staff is here to answer any questions, um, and be happy to do so. Thank you.
I've got a couple, but anybody have questions? Well, go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, just one, and I think I know the answer, but no improvements to Rancho Vista, since it's not technically on their frontage.
Correct, no improvements to the off-site streets.
Okay.
So, is that all, Zach?
That's it.
Okay, so, Luke, you said, um, no public, no public hearings were required, but actually, it's that public hearings are not allowed. They won't even allow us to have public hearings, because if they were required, we would be having public hearings, uh, as we do for every project. So, I just want to make that really clear. So, we were not allowed to hold the usual public hearings, uh, to receive resident comments, or neighbors' comments, or local business comments about this project.
To take that one step further, you're not, we weren't even allowed to notice neighbors. So, no public hearing noticed. The only notice requirement that would have been required is if the city had received a request from... is if the city had received a request from whoever in the area for them in order to specifically receive a notice. We did not receive any of those requests.
So I don't suppose the state of California provides us with a little disclaimer sheet that we can hand out to our residents when they call saying what the heck is being built over there? The answer is no, California does not provide that. So, I mean, it's all state-driven, and we're not allowed to give it the normal Temecula scrutiny and review. Okay, just want to make that perfectly clear. So questions, discussion? All right.
Madam Mayor, we do have one public comment on this item.
Okay, so we please have the comment, please.
Yes, the only speaker is Bob Cowell on this item, number 17.
Well, I wasn't aware, you didn't have any public comments on this, but to me, I think it's a uniting factor that probably most people in this room, except maybe some developers or people making money off of this project, don't want it there. I go by there all the time, and the traffic is horrendous. There's horses that go down on some places around there. I don't think you have any buy-in by anybody. I think there's one issue that all of you could stand up on and say no to the state and says, we want it somewhere else. I don't know who made this decision, then. Is it somebody at the state level? Okay, the state level needs to find out that you don't like it and to move it somewhere else, because, look, it's going to hurt the business at the brewery up there. People at the pond won't be able to park there anymore. There's a lot of problems already with people parking at the Duck Pond that seem out of place. I've been there and didn't feel comfortable with some of the people that are coming in there now. So can you only imagine what's going to happen with more and more people coming in? How are you gonna, how's the traffic going to work with this? How, stand up and fight this. Do something, please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's the one and only speaker on this item.
Okay, so I would echo that. This is part of the state's new movement that disallows cities from doing anything that prevents housing pretty much anywhere in a city. We have really no say. This is another way that the state has taken away our local control and taken over the city of Temecula as far as projects. Now, the benefit for this project is it does include affordable units, and the reason the state's ruling this way is because of the housing shortage in California. So what we really have in California is a shortage of attainable housing with Temecula's median home price being at about $670,000. So we're not allowed to do anything, pretty much. But fortunately for Temecula, this is a good project. It's a great project, and the developer's been wonderful, and they're providing a project that's needed for us to meet our arena requirements or the state mandated requirements to provide affordable housing for our residents, so that will help. Now, Mayor Potem, you have comment?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, couldn't agree more, Mr. Cowell.
Yep.
You know, I got to say, you know, we did fight, along with hundreds of other cities across the state of California, against our legislator and the governor to make our voices heard. We continue to lobby against this, and unfortunately, the state continues to strip us of local control. There's not a whole lot we can do to oppose the project. It's a ministerial action, as Luke mentioned, doesn't, you know, and it's interesting the way all of this was put together, because it's not just that we, you know, don't have public hearings, it's we're prohibited from even daylighting the project publicly. And so there was a lot of thought that went into, not only how do you strip local control away from cities or counties for that matter in making these kinds of decisions, but it really puts us in a very difficult position, because, like you say, with traffic or any of these other impacts that go along normally with projects, we have tools available to us to help mitigate those potential impacts, or for us to say it's the wrong project in the wrong location, or it's the wrong size, or it's the wrong whatever, and we're able to, you know, work first through our planning commission and then through city council if we have to, to get it right, or just reject the concept out of hand. And that opportunity is taken away from us entirely. Now, we're, along with hundreds of other cities, just as upset about this as everybody else is. I will say, when this first came in onboard, you know, a couple, what, year and a half or so ago, you know, one of the things that we did that actually, you know, and we had some legal concerns about this, but believe it or not, we, there is a requirement, they said the 55 units of affordable housing has to be built, it's 20% of the whole project. That's what gets them this exemption for any sort of environmental review. One of the things, and we just fought it up till the last, you know, last moment on this project as well, is we did not allow them to bifurcate that project, right? So originally, and this was one of those things where we thought, you know, and, you know, goes back to some of the comments we have on, you know, sort of the inclusion and equity within the community. Originally, we said we want all 55 of those units distributed throughout the entire complex. Their original plan was to put 55 units in a whole separate area of the property with, I think, fencing and walls around it to like exclude it from the, like, but then, so then effectively, right? It was ridiculous, and effectively, they had two separate projects. And so our interpretation, you know, we fought back as much as we could, our interpretation of that was, you don't have two separate projects. You know, you have one project that you're asking for approval for, and the last sort of effort they had was to, again, once again, bifurcate the projects, because they were having problems with financing one versus the other, and they brought it back. And we said, we held very steadfast to the idea that you shall not get any certificates of occupancy or be able to move forward on the market rate housing until and unless you do the affordable housing project first. You cannot split those two, because my biggest concern was, as a developer, if you were to come in and say, we're going to build all of the market rate stuff first, that's going to go up quick, because you know you're going to make more money on that than on affordable. And then they can abandon the affordable housing project and never actually build it, and yet completely circumvent environmental review and approvals by the city in doing so. And so they actually, you know, fought us at that till the very bitter end just recently, and we held fast on that. And it was funny, because I think during those conversations, they've said, well, we've done these projects in San Diego and other regions, and they've never held that standard. That standard doesn't exist. And I said, well, welcome to Temecula.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to fight for every little scrap that we can have to assert some level of local control. Now, again, we've talked quite a bit about this, and you've seen SB 9 and 10 and other things that come out, you know, splitting parcels and doing all these other things. We continue to fight, but it is extraordinarily challenging. And, you know, our voice is one of 400 and some odd cities, you know, statewide. Everybody's, you know, expressing the same concerns, and yet the state keeps talking about this apparent, you know, it's amazing to me, I'll get off my soapbox here for a moment, but it's amazing to me that we keep talking about this housing crisis in the state, and yet our population, for the first time in modern California history, has declined, you know, significantly, to the point where we've actually lost congressional seats in the latest census, right? And yet we're still having this supposed housing crisis, you know, and I just feel like we're approaching this issue very backwards here in California, and unfortunately, our voices are not being taken seriously. And, you know, unfortunately, that's where we are today. The good news is, I think we're able to at the end, and really do want to commend staff for bringing forward a project that I think isn't ideal, isn't what we wanted, but for the proposals of what was allowable on the property in the first place, this one wasn't bad, right? They weren't able to isolate, you know, affordable housing into its own weird segregated community. They weren't able to do all these sorts of things. The product is going to be a good-looking product. They were able to keep the standards the same, the accessibility to all the amenities and features the same. And so we did extract a lot out of the project that I think is beneficial for Temecula, but again, our hands were severely tied on this. And I will, I will end there by just, hopefully you can feel my frustration here, and I know a lot of you will as well, but, you know, we're going to continue to fight in Sacramento, but it seems like every legislative session, there's a new bill that comes down that limits our ability to exercise our local control, the whole reason why we incorporated as a city in the first place. The city, the state just keeps whittling away at that control, and it's incredibly frustrating and, you know, and it's only going to stop once other communities who, you know, have legislators, I will say, a lot of our legislators, at least locally, have opposed a lot of this to no success. But it's not until other communities start to experience the kind of impacts and projects that they think, you know, negatively impact their community and provide things like segregated housing and things that we haven't seen in the state for decades. It's not until you start seeing that in other communities, where other cities are going to start to stand up and say enough is enough, and we'll wrestle back some of that local control. Anyway, that's all I have.
You sound a little frustrated.
Just a touch.
Yeah, I think we are all very frustrated. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Luke, staff. Moving on to item number 18, approve American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, which is ARPA, spending plan at the request of Mayor Edwards and Mayor Potem Ron. Okay, could we have a staff report, please? Jennifer?
Sure, I will get started here. Let's see, should be playing. There it goes. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. We've seen some of these slides before when we talked about ARPA the first time around. So as a refresher, the American Rescue Plan Act, which is known as ARPA, was signed into law back in March 11th with a total of $350 billion in federal aid that's dedicated to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. The city of Temecula's allocation is just over $14 million, and it'll be paid out in two tranches. The city has received half the allocation and expects to receive the second half next fiscal year. The U.S. Department of Treasury released its guidance on how the funds can be appropriated. The official guidance is called the interim final rule. However, it's still not yet final. The Treasury Department took comments on all aspects of the interim final rule through July 16th, and they're still in the process of addressing the comments and developing the final guidance. The guidance outlines a variety of funding objectives to assist communities in their response to the pandemic, replace lost revenue in order to provide for continued public services, retain jobs, provide economic stabilization for households and businesses, and address systemic public health and economic challenges contributing to the disparate impacts of COVID-19. ARPA fund expenditures can only cover expenses occurring after March 3rd of 2021 up through December 31st of 2026. All funds must be obligated prior to December 31st of 2024. While the list of eligible expenditures is very broad and somewhat up to interpretation, the guidance is very clear on the restricted uses of the funds. ARPA money cannot be deposited into pension funds or be used to reduce an unfunded liability that has accrued over the previous years. Funds cannot be used to offset a reduction in tax revenue that resulted from a change in law, regulation, or administrative interpretation during the covered period. And finally, the funds cannot be used as a grant match on other federal programs who limit the use of federal funds. The interim final rule has categorized the uses of the ARPA funds into these four main categories. The first being for public health emergency response or its negative economic impacts. The second is premium pay for eligible workers. Next is government services, limited by the amount of lost revenue due to the pandemic, and then finally, investments in infrastructure. The government services category is the least restrictive of the four, but is limited by the amount of the city's revenue losses as determined by the U.S. Treasury. The interim guidance provided a very specific calculation on determining the revenue loss, and the calculation compares the average annual growth rate in all eligible revenues over the three years prior to the pandemic, and then extrapolates this growth rate into the future. I think this chart might better illustrate the calculation. So for Temecula, the three years prior to the pandemic included the addition of the voter-approved Measure S revenue effective in April of 2017. This additional revenue source increased our average growth rate caused, or causing an expected fiscal year 1920 revenue amount, absent the pandemic, of 162.7 million, as shown on the blue bar on the chart. And then the orange line on the chart shows our actual revenue trend, which generated 126.3 million in fiscal year 1920. Because of the addition of Measure S, the average annual growth rate was 13.1%, which created a revenue loss amount of 36.3 million. With a calculated revenue loss of more than double of our ARPA allocation of 14 million, the guidance allows us to utilize the full ARPA allocation in the government services category of expenditures. Again, the government services category is the least restrictive of the four and allows for several types of expenditures, including infrastructure, health services, environmental remediation, school and educational services, and finally, public safety services. The funds cannot be used to pay down any debt or replenish reserves. Staff met twice with the Strategic Fiscal Planning Ad Hoc Subcommittee over the past few months and discussed eligible expenditure categories, the revenue loss calculations, and what the best use of these federal funds could be. The Subcommittee settled on the strategy of utilizing the full $14 million to fund public safety services and supplant $14 million in general fund dollars to establish a new program to provide economic relief to our local businesses, nonprofits, and residents to mitigate the negative impacts from the pandemic. Because ARPA funds are federal funds, they come with very strict reporting and auditing requirements, as do all federal grants. By dedicating these federal funds to one source, public safety, the ongoing reporting and auditing requirements are greatly simplified. General fund dollars, however, do not carry the same level of restrictions as do federal funds, giving the council a greater level of flexibility in how they may allocate funds outward towards the community. This concept has been discussed with the city's auditors and the city attorney, and they found no issues with this funding strategy. Here's an illustration showing the proposed change in funding sources for public safety departments. Currently, the general fund, Measure S, and specific grants are used to fund the police and fire departments, as indicated on the slide. The new ARPA funds are recommended to offset the amount of funding coming from the general fund for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, thereby creating available general fund dollars to establish the community reinvestment program. The recommendations before council tonight are to appropriate the full ARPA allocation of $14,079,507 towards police and fire services, split between the two fiscal years in which we will receive the funds. And secondly, appropriate $14,080,000 in available general fund balance to establish the new COVID-19 pandemic community reinvestment program. A little more on this program. Through multiple discussions with the Strategic Fiscal Planning Ad Hoc Subcommittee, a total of six categories of funding are being recommended to reach all aspects of our community who have been adversely impacted by COVID. Because this program is utilizing general fund dollars, the council has the discretion to create program criteria, timelines, and administration that will best serve Temecula residents so long as there is a demonstrated community benefit. The categories and recommended funding levels for each are proposed to be outward-facing in the form of grants and/or partnerships with local nonprofits to provide the funding to the sectors of the community impacted the most by the pandemic. The first category addresses the economic impacts felt by our local business community. As the council considers the extension of the outdoor dining expansion in Old Town next spring, the program could provide $2 million in funding to assist the businesses in meeting the city's outdoor dining standards, including any permit, development, and lease fees required by the new standards. $500,000 is recommended to fund a marketing campaign designed to attract visitors back to Temecula, as well as assist local employers to recruit and bring employees back up to full employment. A total of $1 million in general business grants would be available to help eligible businesses mitigate their economic impacts from the pandemic, and this program would be similar to the $500,000 provided last year in the form of Temecula Assist Grants. And finally, as an added incentive to help startup businesses, a proposal to waive the rent at the city's business incubator is recommended. The city currently provides a community services funding grant program for non- The city currently provides a community services funding grant program for nonprofits serving Temecula residents totaling one hundred thousand dollars per fiscal year. This program could be augmented with an additional two million to increase the amount of support for our local nonprofit service providers to help families, seniors, veterans, special needs, and many other members of our community. An additional one million dollars is designed to augment current funding to address homelessness through partnerships with various outreach services, as well as provide additional resources to abate encampments, install fencing, and trash receptacle enclosures to address health and safety concerns. With the state's dissolution of redevelopment agencies back in two thousand twelve, the primary funding source for affordable housing projects was eliminated. Temecula's former redevelopment agency had issued bonds in two thousand ten and two thousand eleven, of which the remaining proceeds have been programmed for affordable housing projects. The capital improvement program budget currently includes two point seven million in funding for the Vine Creek Affordable Housing Project near Old Town. However, in order for this development to be competitive to receive tax credit financing, a higher local contribution is necessary. An additional four million dollars would bring the city's contribution to six point seven million for this thirty million dollar project and would provide sixty new affordable housing units, fourteen of which are dedicated to individuals or families with special needs. In the uptown Temecula area, the city currently owns land acquired with affordable housing dollars. An additional one million dollar contribution could be combined with the land to attract another affordable housing project to the uptown area. And currently, Habitat for Humanity offers a residential rehabilitation grant program to eligible homeowners. The program helps applicants repair or replace aging home infrastructure, such as roofs, windows, HVAC systems, and the like. This program would be augmented with five hundred thousand dollars to provide additional resources to increase the grant amounts from an average of eight thousand dollars per grant up to fifteen thousand dollars per grant. This program has helped many seniors in our community as their homes age and are in need of repairs. The pandemic has had significant impacts on the mental health of individuals and families throughout our community, including direct impacts to first responders who serve on the front lines in dealing with this unique situation. By partnering with local nonprofits, a contribution of one million dollars is designed to address the unique nature of behavioral and mental health services and provide support to our first responders, veterans, and other at-risk individuals and families. And finally, as the economy continues to rebound, this new program includes a recommendation to partner with the local higher education institutions to further efforts in the workforce development arena. An additional one million dollars could create business and certification programs to better prepare our residents to re-enter and strengthen the local workforce. The Ad Hoc Subcommittee recommends the establishment of a new COVID-19 pandemic community reinvestment program with fourteen million eighty thousand in available general fund dollars. Additionally, it is requested that the Ad Hoc Subcommittee be authorized to work with staff to develop the various program criteria and administration details for each of the categories of funding. And that concludes my presentation, and unless you have any questions for me, I will turn it over to the Subcommittee members for further discussion. Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at this allocation of funds, and we provided a guideline for the way, as you saw, for those funds to be spent in in various categories. And so it's up to the city council now to, you know, have discussion, approve, augment, amend, or whatever. So are there any questions? Nope? Nope? No questions? Okay, let me go right to comments. Stu, go ahead.
First off, I have problems with four categories. Two I don't. The homeless services, I'm totally okay with, and the housing assistance, totally good with, because the Vine Creek project is a good project, and anything we can do to move uptown along, I think is a great idea. And Habitat for Humanities, they they do amazing work. So those two categories, I don't have a problem with. I do want to see another category, though, and that's public safety infrastructure. And I'd like to see five million dollars go into that, because we all know that we most likely are going to be buying a fire station here in Old Town, probably in the next year or so, who knows? And that could be used for that. Plus, if we do decide to move forward with a police station, I'd like to be able to have money available to do all that that pre-work on the police station, because that's that's going to be costly, too. As far as the two million dollars for outdoor dining, I think that's a little excessive. I don't think we're going to need that much, and I I think that's that's not that's not realistic. The campaign to boost the local economy, I'm totally good with. General business grants, you know, a million dollars is a lot. Waive the incubator rents, totally cool with. Nonprofits, two million, I think is a little excessive, especially if we're not going to spread it out over like ten years, because that's a lot of money for our our staff to try to manage and give away in whatever couple of years or whatever, what timeframe you guys are even thinking. Behavioral health, a million dollars, I I think that's even a little excessive. I I think we we can pare that down, and there's a lot of nonprofits in our community that 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 money could actually funnel through. Higher education, million dollars, again, I think that's a little excessive. Workforce development, I'm I'm I do think we we have opportunities to actually help people in our community to find a job and be educated to to have that job. So, you know, but I don't know, a million dollars. So to me, those four categories, I'm still kind of, you know, I'm I'm not in a hundred percent agree with agreement with, and the amounts definitely seem a little excessive. But that's just my opinion.
Okay, anybody? Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, thanks. So first of all, thank you to Director Hennessy for the report, and then obviously the Subcommittee for the work that you put into this. Serving on the TCSD Funding Subcommittee is very difficult, right? When you start looking at numbers and you start thinking about things, and I think from what I'm seeing, I'm very supportive. And we had a one-on-one with staff on this, so I kind of went through everything. I think for me, this has to be forward-facing, right? Like this has to impact our businesses, this has to impact our our nonprofits, and affordable housing is directly impacting residents, right? Behavioral health, again, that's directly impacting our residents, and I like that. You know, I've seen some other cities use these funds for just infrastructure, and I think we need to be more forward-facing with our community. Now, we could certainly get into the numbers, right, and like kind of debate the 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 overall numbers, but I think this, for me, this is a good starting point, right? Like if we don't need two million for outdoor dining, it just doesn't pan out, then well, clearly, we're not just throwing that money in the gutter. We'll be able to reallocate that to something else. But overall, like I like where we're headed with this. I think, you know, the community has struggled, we've all struggled, and I think, you know, there's some nonprofits that are listening right now and seeing a two million dollar amount, right? They're going, well, we can do a lot of good work in the community with that kind of money. So overall, I'm generally supportive of this.
Matt, Jess, anything?
I'll go first. So just a couple of things is what I'm seeing here. Question is, I know with the outdoor dining, we don't know a hundred percent if that's going to be there, if it's going, if people are going to take that on. So that's something I'd like to be able to look at. Do we need the two million? So that's one of the areas I would think about. I still, I support the outdoor, the Old Town area, but the question is, are we going to need it? So I'd like to be able to get a little bit more information on that. My biggest thing is going to be to be able to support the local businesses. We've had, I believe, over three hundred businesses that closed during the pandemic time, and so that's the numbers that I got last year around that time. So is there something that we can do towards those businesses? And also, another area would be rent for rent for businesses, rent for housing, things like that. Was there a question or? So the other thing also, obviously, homeless is another big area for me. I think that's wonderful. As we see, there's a lot of dumping, so getting fences, getting the getting everything squared off, so that way they're not getting into the dumpsters, because it becomes a mess. I believe we had somebody a couple of months ago, about eleven thousand dollars that she had to pay out because of the homeless encampments, which was a disaster. So we'll be able to really help the city in that area. The other big area, and I think Matt can agree on this, is the behavioral services support area. I truly believe that we need more than a million dollars, and I'll tell you why. This last year and a half, we've seen a lot of issues with our children because of depression. We've seen suicide increases, and so I just want to make sure that our residents are taken care of through this time of whether they're being, they're losing their jobs right now. There's going to be a lot of need right now, especially we're looking at veterans, to be able to help them and other businesses that are really going to need the help. I don't know if we need the education, if we need a pull from some area. That's again, another area where we need to talk about, but my biggest areas I would like to see is the behavioral areas, the nonprofits, homeless, and being able to help the businesses, for sure.
Matt, you want to go? You're writing, you're writing, you're writing.
Can can you pull up the slide that talked about the objectives for a moment for what those funds were intended for? The next, I think it was the... Bulloted. Nope, not that one. There we go, funding objectives. So so here's, just to kind of help everybody understand, I think, you know, Mayor and I are thinking on all of this, this is where we started. So so let's let's put this in this perspective of there's fourteen million dollars, let's round it off, of support funds coming from the federal government to the city of Temecula. We had options of, you know, putting it into all these different revenue streams and others, right, following these objectives, or what we chose to do instead was to place it all into public safety, because if it, from an accounting and auditing perspective, it was the simplest solution for us. But then we wanted to provide exactly what you're talking about earlier is, look, the we were extremely blessed during COVID based on our financial and fiscal position of of our city, and there were a lot of decisions made prior to that that put us in a very different financial situation than a lot of other cities. And so rather than just absorbing the fourteen million dollars and calling it good, right, what we wanted to do is take that fourteen million dollars and but then extract it into, you know, from our general fund to put toward, and that's where we started with, these funding objectives, right? Because we still wanted to maintain the spirit of what those fourteen million dollars were intended for in the first place, right? So that, starting with support urgent COVID response efforts, well, that's kind of, you know, let's move past that one. Replace lost revenue, strengthen support for public services, and retain jobs. Well, we we're trying to do a lot of that, the marketing piece as as an issue, the investment in the outdoor dining, and I'll have I'll have Luke explain a little bit on that in just a moment. But the idea was, these are the things that helped Temecula stay more resilient than other communities. So we wanted to make sure that we invested in those things that would attract, you know, employers or employees to come back to work in the city of Temecula, right? Get that marketing campaign, let folks know Temecula is open for business. We are, you know, our businesses are thriving again, we want that. The outdoor dining saved a lot of our, you know, saved Old Town, it saved a lot of what we have here, and and so, but but that's a, that was a temporary solution, right? It's a solution that we all kind of, you know, like, I think, and we've talked about in various capacities, but it's a temporary solution nonetheless. And so the concern is, is if, you know, if we want to keep those restaurants, those businesses thriving, then we need to be able to provide a more permanent solution to them, which means a heavier investment in infrastructure. Also, just from my perspective, standardizing the look in Old Town, so it doesn't look like a hodgepodge or a flea market, right? And I appreciate, don't get me wrong, I appreciate what all the businesses did, but everybody's got this different idea, and it would be nice to standardize that and come up with one thing. And and and, you know, there's accessibility issues and everything else that goes along with that, so we will be able to adopt that in a more permanent fashion. That, again, meets those objectives of sort of enhancing business and recovery. So that's kind of where we started. The public safety infrastructure, I agree. I mean, I would love to be able to set aside five million dollars for the fire station twelve here in Old Town when that, you know, when we are in a position to have to buy that from the state of California when they, you know, build the other station in in wine country. But I don't, I'm not confident, I mean, we could do whatever we want to, but I don't think that fits the spirit of the fund of what the ARPA funds were intended for in the first place, right? Because really, what we'd be doing is taking five million dollars and then putting it into a fund to help the city pay for capital expenses, and that specifically was kind of called out as, you know, not allowable, right? And so we're kind of circumventing a little bit, yeah, it makes sense, yeah, I get why we could do that, but but it benefits the city, it doesn't benefit businesses, right? It doesn't benefit our community. And and so I feel like, you know, the city, we will just have to figure out where to get the money from for that fire station, but I don't think this is the appropriate place to take that fund from. The other, the other ones, the nonprofits, you know, we, and and Aaron or or, yeah, maybe Aaron, you can remind me, we had done for Michelle's Place a larger grant, am I remembering this correctly, where we we gave them fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, we, I think we did a, I think we made an exception to the normal annual, you know, community service funding, and the city council chose to, and I think Pachanga stepped up and matched a large grant to help them with their tenant improvements for Michelle's Place is kind of what I recall, and and in the community kind of came around the city and Pachanga as they were fundraising for breast cancer and that infrastructure.
Actually, they were fundraising and they opened that facility because they expanded not only to cover breast cancer to all cancers.
Right.
And so their clientele quadrupled at least.
So and and not not to diminish the value of our community services grants, because they're they're incredibly helpful, and we saw folks talking earlier tonight about how helpful they are. However, one of the reasons why I remember working with folks at Michelle's Place with that originally was because a five thousand dollar grant is consequential to a nonprofit or any any dollar coming is, but a fifty thousand dollar grant takes you from here and brings you here, right? Now you can have, you could, you know, because, I mean, is our goal to, you know, consistently subsidize nonprofit organizations to keep them at a particular level with five thousand dollars at a piece? Or here we have an opportunity to, say, put two million dollars into really taking our just outstanding nonprofit organizations and elevating them to a place that is extremely difficult. I mean, we've all worked with nonprofits, we know how difficult finding those dollars are. And so if we're talking about whether it's behavioral health services or homeless services or or, you know, special needs programs, veteran program, it doesn't matter what the topic is, we have an opportunity to propel those organizations who come forward with solid proposals, much like Michelle's Place did, you know, using them as the example, of saying, we want to expand our business to not only serve, you know, people dealing with breast cancer, but all cancers in the city, right? And that wasn't something they were going to accomplish with five thousand dollars, right? And so we kind of teased that program out, little did we know, you know, a year or two later, we'd have to, you know, potentially two million dollars to do the same across a much wider breadth of of nonprofits. So I would, I would really like to see, you know, those those things stay and be very strategic in where we where we want to see those those dollars and where that growth really needs to occur to support our community in the best way we can. The workforce development piece, that's, you know, simply, I mean, whether it's MSJC or or, you know, Cal State or whoever, workforce development, from my my perspective is, we if if we're going to try and get people back to work, get the businesses that, you know, we lost, get the get the skills and the training and, you know, and and Stu, you're, you know, you've been doing a lot of the the programming around that and working with the city, this is an opportunity for us to invest. We're not talking about degree programs, we're talking about, talk about workforce development, getting people back to work with the skills they need to move into the jobs that benefit our local economy to the our local economy to the highest extent possible, specifically focused on things that our economy is built on. Hospitality, tourism management, you know, I mean, you know, healthcare, you know, all of those, those things that, you know, and, and you're seeing it. It doesn't matter where you go today. You are seeing a delay in, in services, businesses struggling to get people to come back to work, you know, that, that drain that has occurred. And we, you know, we saw those reports when we were up in Sacramento a little while ago. Part of it is just folks, you know, leaving the workforce. Part of it is just a geography. A lot of people moved, right? And, and redistributed themselves and haven't bothered coming back. Is it a training issue? Is it, doesn't matter. We need that workforce back if we want Temecula to thrive into the future. And then, the, the, the last one was the behavioral health, and I'll advocate for that. No, I don't think a million dollars is enough for behavioral health, right? There's so much more we could do. If we want to start talking about reallocating funds or whatever, I'm more than happy to, to have that conversation. My perspective was, and, and it's kind of interesting, I was talking to somebody about this a little bit ago. And I said, you know, five years ago, if we had sat here at city council and said, and I came up with a proposal and I said, "I want the city of Temecula to provide a million dollars in support funds for Temecula Valley Hospital to build a mental and behavioral health treatment center." I mean, there would have been a recall on me so fast, right? And I'm not kidding. I mean, right? Because the perspective of this five years ago was, oh, well, you're just dealing with homeless and drug addicts. Five years later, I think we all truly understand what mental and behavioral health means in our community, right? And it is much deeper. And so, my perspective on this was, in particular, those first responders, those frontline workers, our nurses, our doctors, our, our paramedics, our firefighters, our police officers, that have dealt with some very difficult times. Our teachers, you know, our administrators. This has been extremely challenging for everybody, and we are only starting to understand the toll that this is taking on our communities now and into the future. It's going to be deep. Our, our children, you mentioned earlier, are, are, you know, going to have to deal with what we've experienced as, not just a community, but as, as, as a, as a nation, as a planet. And so, investing in that, I think, is absolutely paramount. And a million dollars isn't even close to what we should be investing in providing the behavioral health support services for our community. So, you know, so, I, I mean, I, and I, and I, look, if we had, you know, $28 million, I'd be even happier because we could do a lot more, but we just don't. And so, this was for, for myself and I think, you know, Mayor Edwards, it was our attempt to sort of sit down and think strategically, where, where could we put $14 million into our community that has the largest benefit for economic recovery? But also deals with some of the most impactful things that have occurred in our community over the last couple of years and helps us, you know, become more resilient and responsive to, to those issues. And so, I'm, I'm happy to talk about, you know, shifting funds around, but I'd be fairly resistant to, you know, making any, you know, sort of major changes, quite frankly, because I, I think we've, we've hit a pretty decent formula. So, I, I know I spent a lot of time here. I apologize. But I wanted you to really understand what our thinking was when we put through this sort of very careful, very deliberate process.
Thank you, Matt. Not only did we do that, but we thought of ways to leverage each of these different amounts in different categories. For example, when we talk about behavioral health services and support, we know there's a critical shortage of counselors and, you know, inpatient services and even outpatient services. So, but we're also looking at nonprofit support, and a lot of those nonprofits deal with mental health issues. So, that is a leveraged item there. So, we've got $2 million in nonprofit support plus $1 million in behavioral health support services. Then, we're looking at higher education slash workforce development. This is a partnership that will expand, hopefully, working, we don't know, but we want to work with Cal State University San Marcos and Mount San Jacinto Community College to add extra certification programs. And those certification programs can also include counseling for mental health and mental health professionals. So, there's another way to leverage all of those funds together. We know we have to, we're mandated for housing assistance, affordable housing, because the state took away our only finance model, and that was our redevelopment agency. So, the affordable housing, you know, that's critical in order to make our, our RIN numbers. And then, residential rehabilitation grants. As Temecula starts to age, you know, our older population, they want to stay in their homes. And if they're able to stay in their homes, that's great. But they want to be able to keep them in good shape, you know, prevent, you know, plumbing issues, maintenance issues, things like that. So, and then, as far as Habitat for Humanity goes, they have worked beautifully with the city over the years to provide independent, you know, free, single-family residences. And right now, they're looking at rehabilitation rather than building houses from the ground up, which is even, you know, more cost-effective for them. So, that will go to Habitat. That also counts toward our affordable housing initiative. So, there's another leverage right there. Let's see, what else do we have? Well, again, regarding the outdoor dining in Old Town, we wanted exactly what Matt said. We wanted the, the look to be more consistent with Old Town. From one restaurant to the next, we'd like them to be consistent, maybe similar colors, similar designs, so we can help with that. Marketing campaign to boost the local economy, you know, nobody, I don't think people are going to argue with that. Just letting people know what Temecula is, what's available here, and that we are fully open and, you know, up and running like crazy. Then, we look at the general business grants. We've already done $500,000 and it's, you know, they don't have to pay those back to businesses. And they've done everything from tenant improvements to maintenance that they hadn't done before. Also, it helped them retain their employees during COVID, so, you know, it could be used for those items. And then, the waiving the incubator, businesses rent. Our incubator is nationally famous and, in fact, more known around the world for its innovative designs and business startups. In fact, it's an award, we've had businesses in there that are award-winning, recognized on the national level. And a couple of them have been recognized as being the fastest-growing, you know, startup businesses in the country because of that. So, the incubator just helps to continue with the, you know, certifications. It's an education process. It helps them to build new businesses. And then, also, the nonprofits. When we sit each year and give away our CDBG, Community Development Block Grant funding, which comes from the Housing and Urban Development, we always say it's never enough. And we're talking about giving our nonprofits maybe $5,000, $6,000 each. Now, that is a lot of money, but the need is great in so many of these areas, especially when you look at social service providers. Again, we're talking about counselors. We're talking about finding houses, housing for people, dealing with displaced families, you know, young children, foster kids, youth, seniors. We're a growing population, and I'm proud to be one of those. But there are many seniors who need that help, you know, and able to, in order to be able to stay in their homes. So, we've leveraged that against the funding that we can provide for, for rehabilitation for homes. I mean, this is so cross-referenced that it's been very efficient. And one, each of these categories helps the other categories. So, I would not, obviously, we could give away much more money in these areas, but I wouldn't want to shortchange any of these. And, and I think moving things around, because these things are so tied together and many of them overlap or support each other, these programs, I think that we have a nice balance right where we are. And again, you know, we are, we need to be responsible to our residents. This needs to go into the community, into the businesses, and into the residents, into the things that support our, our residents. So, I think we did a pretty good job, staff. We had a great discussion and staff did a great job trying to interpret all of our comments and our sentiments. And so, this is what we came up with, and I'm really happy with the way that it looks. So, I don't know, Zach, Stu?
Yeah. So, this is a perfect example of the Brown Act. I wasn't in on this conversation, and if I was, I probably would have agreed with him the whole way. So, I'm on board now because I understand your logic and where you were going with it. So, but, but I had no clue because I wasn't in.
We can't talk.
Exactly. I wasn't in on this conversation. So, I, I rescind my opinions and I, I humbly go with yours.
I love you, Stu.
Right?
Thank you. Yeah, but it, but it really does have to, for us to go through our reasoning and what we were thinking. Yeah. Well?
Well, so, I'll move, I'll move the item as presented. I was going to let Stu move the item, but I'll move the item as presented. And with just a little note, you know, I'm old enough to remember that, it wasn't that long ago that we were getting hammered publicly for these funds, right? And there's no one here.
Right.
So, we're doing really good things with this money, and I hope the community sees that.
True.
Madam Mayor, before we actually have the full item moved, we do have one public comment that I need to read for the record.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, if, if I have one thing to say too.
Yes, Erin.
Do you want to take the public comment first?
Sure, I can go ahead and read it into the record. It's just one, and it is from Martha Howard, and she states, Exhibit A, Item 18 on the Agenda List Allocation of Surplus Funds from the American Rescue Plan Act 2021 ARPA. There are two points I want to make. First, the funds should be redistributed, taking in consideration Temecula's special needs population. The children, youth, and young adults do not have essential programs in which they can further and enhance their social and learning skills. Second, my request is not unfounded because the city should and must assess funds from Measure S, which continue to be a steady source of income. The measure was passed under the assurance it would be used for safety. Therefore, a portion of the ARPA should be used for special needs programs instead of competing with the nonprofit distribution. Furthermore, your proposal to allocate $500,000 for marketing purposes should come from the general fund and surplus from Measure S rather than from the ARPA funds. Exhibit A shows under nonprofits a $2 million distribution between six categories thus overlapping in efficient allocation for special needs. I urge you to make a redistribution of funds, keeping in mind the importance of providing community support to the families who have special needs members. I propose to allocate exclusively $1 million and the $500,000 from marketing to create and subsidize special needs programs at schools and in our community. And that's the only public comment.
Okay, so, I will make a note that special needs is included under a $2 million, a $2 million recommendation along with, you know, families, youth, veterans, minorities, social service providers, and seniors. So, we're definitely including special needs. And the $500,000 for marketing, you know, goes directly to, again, building businesses, retaining jobs, increasing the number of jobs. So, you know, high tide floats all boats. So, when we have more people working, families do better, businesses do better, and everybody does better. So, I would maintain that we are thinking of special needs. In fact, Temecula has a huge program for special needs outreach, if everybody knows. We have special parks, we have programs, we have partnerships with restaurants for special needs families, we have movie theater partnerships. I mean, special needs are a particular area of focus in Temecula that we are very proud of. So, I don't know, anybody want to add to that?
I just have.
Erin, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
So, I just want to say, first off, I know you guys had a lot of work to do. This is not easy, and I think you guys did a great job. I really do. I would just like to add two questions. I guess one would be to Luke, because I was just talking to, to Mayor Protem. Looking at the outdoor diner, okay? Because I'll be honest with you, the one area that I would like to add to, and there's at least two of us who would like to, like, take a look into this, is the behavioral health support, and there's a reason for that. But it's saying, where would the funds come from? So, Luke, my question to you is, is for the outdoor dining, where are we at with that? I mean, I know we've spoken a couple of times that there are some people that might not be able to go along with eating out as much as we love it as a city. What does that look like? And is that something that maybe we don't need $2 million right now allocated to that?
Yeah, so, previously, we had done, done a kind of a simple survey of, of the folks that are, the restaurateurs that are out there right now utilizing the program. And we did our best to explain some, some of the realities they'd be facing if they took advantage of the program, a permanent program. And every single one of them said they were, that they were interested in the program. Mayor Protem summed it up actually pretty, pretty nicely earlier. What you see out there now in a permanent program would not, would not be there in a permanent program. So, it would need to be reconstructed. There's, you know, building permit issuance that would take place. There's ADA issues. There's all kinds of, of different construction issues that would, that would need to be dealt with. There's also the issue of fees primarily, and not to call out one agency, but sewer fees, which are extremely expensive primarily for restaurants. So, the fees for a restaurant could be, you know, in, in hundreds of thousands of dollars, $100,000 or more. And if you have, you know, four, five, six, seven restaurants utilizing the program, you know, you're going to use a, you know, a good chunk of that money just on the fees, let alone the design of the, of the permanent structures, the construction of the permanent structures, and all the other fees that need to go into that. So, it's hard to tell exactly how much would be used, but just on the fees alone, I think that there's considerable opportunity for those funds to be spent out pretty quickly.
And will they, will we be able to have a new front? Will be, will store owners be able to afford to be able to do that?
Would, well, it, it all depends on how many participate, right?
That's my question.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where I keep going with that. So, it's, I would, I would almost like to see is, how many are willing to, to be able to participate if they can? And if we don't have it, because I think you've mentioned there have been a couple of businesses who, their outdoor dining just doesn't work for them. And so, yes, we need the money, but could that be allocated? So, my question to you, Council, is, could we allocate some of that money if it's not all used for the outdoor dining for the benefit of the, of our residents? Because if they're not mentally stable, they're not going to work. That's kind of how I look at it. We need to have people stabilized to actually go to the higher education. We need people to not be on the streets. We need people to actually get into housing and be able to actually have a business. And if we can't support them mentally, how are we going to be able to increase and move up? How are they going to be able to move up into society to be stable? So, that's just my intake on it and thought is, can we allocate any more towards that? Because I can tell you, Mayor, one of the great things actually you brought up that we've been experiencing with veterans, and I'm sure my veterans can, can adhere to this and say yes to this, the insurance companies are not picking up, or they're not taking veterans anymore. Because TRICARE takes seven to eight months to be able to pay back on the insurance. So, veterans, veterans' families cannot get health services. They have to pay out of pocket, and that can run from $150 to $300 a session. And so, we're missing a huge chunk where we have veterans in here that are losing their jobs, that have had PTSD, that have had to deal with things, and them and their families now are hosed and are not going to be able to get anything. So, that's just where my heart is really looking at that. Is there any way we can pour out a little bit more to those first responders, families, and veterans?
Well, do we know how much? I mean, we don't really have an idea about how much it would cost. We, we don't know. I know there are a lot out there. We just don't know how many. And we, and Temecula Valley Hospital is looking at expansion also for a behavioral health center. So, go ahead, Matt.
Well, I'm, I'm going to ask the city manager here. Flexibility-wise, let's say we, let's say we bump that up to $2 million for behavioral health support, right? Functionally, if, because I guess what I'm saying is maybe we need to put a bit of a buffer in here. And I'm wondering, you know, Mr. Adams, are we able to build in, let's say, a 10% buffer, right? Of, of uncertainty across these programs? And, you know, out of the general fund, generally, you know, are we able to build in a 10% buffer to say, you know, "Look, if behavioral health services needs that extra, you know, million dollars, we've got that." If it need, if it, if we don't need $2 million into the, you know, hardscaping or other things or, or permitting fees or whatever on the sewer fees for, for, you know, outdoor dining, it can come out of there. But, but, you know, you, you know what I'm getting at? Are, are we able to maybe increase our commitment just a little bit to provide that? And look, if we don't need it, we don't need it, right? And if outdoor dining doesn't need it, that's fine. And, and it could be that we work with, you know, Temecula Valley Hospital. I know we've talked to, to them already about this. And maybe, you know, maybe a million dollars is fine. Maybe $2 million is what really helps it push over the line to, you know. But there's a lot of uncertainty, I guess, in, in all of this. And these numbers were good ballparks based on our conversations with folks, but they're not hard and fast numbers because we haven't seen the proposals. And nonprofits, another example. Maybe we don't get $2 million worth of applications because we don't have.
Well, we've got veterans in nonprofits.
Right? And so, so I'm wondering, you know, are we able to work with this just a little bit to maybe provide us with a little bit of... to maybe provide us with a little bit additional flexibility?
And we're looking at-
There's a lot there.
There is, I know.
So let me, let me take a stab at it. Um, this, this was meant to be a starting point this evening and, and I think it served its purpose. So these, these numbers are nice round numbers for purpose of discussion. But as Luke mentioned, we haven't had time to go out and survey the Old Town restaurant community. Now, with respect to outdoor dining, Councilmember Alexander, my recommendation would be that that gr- grant, call it two million, call it 1.5, whatever it's going to be, is tied to the city council's decision next spring, when you are going to decide the future of outdoor dining versus maybe tonight. So, um, because remember, outdoor dining expires June 30th, 2022. If that is going to be a decision, policy decision that you take on in the spring, which I would recommend we bring to you, and there is a multi-year extension that's granted, then these grant dollars should come at the same time as that extension and be an offsetting cost and an incentive for folks to participate. So I think we can do a little homework between now and then, um, because we don't know if it's a million dollars worth of cost or if it's-
Right.
-2.5 or if it's two. So there could very well be, um, ways to, um, we didn't get any bids for a, um, you know, a marketing program. It could be three hundred thousand dollars and you pick up 200 and you reprogram it for behavioral health. So for the purposes of tonight, I think what I might recommend is that, um, give us enough general direction with categories, dollar figures, um, send us back to, um, tighten and sharpen our pencil, work with the subcommittee and then come back to the full council with, um, you to take an actual vote on, on sort of the hard dollars. Some of this stuff might not flesh out immediately, um, and it might take a little bit of time. And, and Mayor Protem Ron, to your, to your point, I mean, if, I, I think we should, I think we should stay focused on the grant dollars, um, but certainly if, if, if we exceed that and there's still a business need, let's, let's have that conversation during the operating budget. Let's have that conversation at mid-year, let's, let's look at other ways. And if I may continue, I, I did hear some things that I, I did want to kind of put out there on the record and, and throw out there. First off, Councilmember Stuart, I, I appreciate your comments about adhering to the Brown Act and just, just acknowledging that. I know Peter Thorson did too, so, um, thanks, thanks. And that's how the process is supposed to work. With respect to the fire station, um, I just wanted to remind everyone, I believe in the current operating budget, we, uh, did, uh, allocate a percentage of dollars for a future acquisition of Station 12.
We did.
You, you all voted on that. There's a separate account set up for that and, and we don't expect to have to buy a fire station for five years, but if we do this every year, we'll have those dollars set aside for that fire station if that's continued. So that was one thing. Outdoor dining, we covered. Temecula Valley Hospital has been mentioned and when we, we took this subcommittee list and we, we met with, um, Peter, and I know, I, I think I speak for him, when there is some real legal consternation associated with, um, donating general fund money to a for-profit hospital. And so we're going to have to explore and get creative with respect to behavioral health and what that looks like. And that's where I say we need to go back and sort of figure out, you know, is that going to a nonprofit?
And that's where the nonprofits-
Uh, multiple nonprofits, is there, um, is there agencies? If, if the goal is behavioral health, which I'm hearing tonight, i- it's, it supports there, um, we have to figure out how to distribute that. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that. The other thing, because this, these are general fund dollars, there, I don't believe there's anything really precluding the council down the road in giving direction to say, um, you know, two million dollars is our number for nonprofits. Um, I'd like that to last four years and I'd like you guys to do five hundred thousand dollars a year for four years on top of your budgeted amount of a hundred thousand dollars to the community services. So we're not necessarily confined to the same time constraints as the feds because we're adhering to that. So I just, I wanted to put that out there. And then lastly, um, or two things, um, this was helpful tonight, but, but clearly there's still work to be done. And so I kind of wanted that direction to kind of go back, sharpen things, um, if, if we need to, and then, and then come back for, for a final approval. And then lastly, um, I, I, I couldn't let this go without being said, there's a lot of communities throughout the nation right now that are, um, going over their ARPA funds and they are using those for, uh, budget holes. They're filling budget gaps, they're keeping it for themselves, they're building capital projects that are long-waited. This was very much an outward-facing proposal by the subcommittee and staff, um, into the business community. So what you saw was fourteen million dollars being proposed to be reinvested out, not kept in. And I, I think that's worth mentioning and acknowledging and celebrating too. So, uh, with that, I'm, I'm happy to try to answer any more questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Erin.
So I got a quick question for you, Erin. One of the things with that, if we do use behavioral health services support, can those grants be used for individuals then to go to private psychologists and we can just set up private funds for that?
I'll defer to Peter on that.
That's something we look into.
If we can, that would be maybe a good area to specialize or be very specific on that behavioral, because I know there are some areas for nonprofits. I mean, we, we do counseling as well, but sometimes people need a little bit more beyond what, um, some of these areas have, or they're more specialized and specific of what they're needing for behavioral health. So I'd like to see if maybe that's an option to be able to do that.
I think one thing we need to be careful of too, as a, you know, a nonprofit CEO-
Yes.
-and you too, is that this is, we're thinking of this as one-time money.
Right.
Because it's offset by the, by the, the COVID funds. So I, I am very careful about spending one-time money on long-term needs and behavioral health will be one of them, especially when you're getting down to an, in, you know, individual by individual. That can be scary. If you get somebody and you're supporting their, uh, you know, their personal counseling or whatever, what happens when the funding is gone, you know? So I do, I really have concerns about that. But the good news is the money is all here.
Right.
It's all in here. And so again, we've got veterans listed in one place and veterans listed under nonprofit support. So, uh, you know, I mean, the money's there. So I think it's just a matter of using this as just a basic guideline for now and then-
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
And then we'll be, because we don't know, but we'll be able to assess, um, you know, better, um, you know, once we start looking at particular numbers.
No, you guys did a great job. I just, just again, just trying to throw things out there just to learn. I think we all are, you know, just trying to figure that out.
The good news is the money's there, so-
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Zach?
Yeah, so, um, I just really wanted to take a second to thank our city manager really and appreciate the two minutes that you distilled sort of that down, right? It helps us. I think for me, you know, and there is a motion on the floor for this as presented, this is just a starting point, right? We could get into the minutia of all this and dig down into the weeds on this stuff. This is that jumping off point and, uh, everything is a living document, you know? If there's one thing that I've learned is we're the council, well, we can change it if we want to, right? So I see this coming back over, you know, the next six months, 12 months, and we're working through this process and if we see a hole, we fill it, right? Maybe Vine Creek doesn't become viable, right? Well, there's four million dollars right there.
Right.
So let's just, uh, you know, again, I've, I've moved this item and, and we can, uh, get on to making an impact in the community.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay, your motion is second?
Second.
So unfortunately, my screen is frozen, so we'll just do a voice vote. Um, Councilmember Stuart?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Mayor Edwards?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Good job, everyone. I think you just made a really great decision and it's going to be a huge impact to the community, so thank you. All right, so departmental reports, receive and file, city manager, anything?
Uh, nothing further than that, Madam Mayor.
And Peter?
We have no reportable action from closed session tonight.
All right, and item, the next item is no longer there for futures, so I'm looking at a-
Wait, wait, I do have future.
Oh.
Yeah, because you just canceled her's future out, but I have a future.
Okay.
Okay? So, um-
You did not tell me that.
Right? Well, I, so I think it's important for us to have a subcommittee or some sort of conversation about, a- and, you know, uh, Councilmember Alexander brought up a monument. So I think it's important for us to come up with a policy on what kinds of monuments or, or things that go on public property. And so I, I would like to create some sort of a policy, uh, for us going forward so we don't have to have this conversation. It falls into the category of yes or no. And so, um, I would like to have that put onto the next agenda so we can have that conversation.
So we, Randy, you're about to-
Yeah, so we can, uh, no problem. Um, we will go ahead on the next agenda, um, under items for future agendas, include at your request, a monument policy. And you can go ahead and give your three-minute explanation at that time, Councilmember Stuart.
And it was excellent, by the way.
And, and, and the council can go ahead and vote to go ahead and put that on the agenda and staff can go back and do some work on that.
Ju- just for clarity, I thought we had a similar policy.
So I can, um, I've been asked numerous times over the last week or so on this. Um, I am 99.9% sure that we do not have-
We do not, okay.
We do have a naming policy for city existing facilities. However, with respect to monuments, um, based on our research, we've really taken them individually because, for example, the Japanese monument at the Duck Pond, we considered it on the 10th anniversary. Um, the Jim and Peg Moore monument, we considered it separately. And my guess from the research is that because the location could differ, because design could differ, because reasoning could differ, that a policy wasn't applied at that time.
Okay. All right, then that's good. So we've got, Erin, you look like you're about to-
No, I was just going to reiterate that. I think all of, you know, everything from the Japanese garden to the Fallen Heroes Memorial, those were taken outside of a policy with the consent, full consent and backing and support of the city council. So as those things came up-
One at a ti- one at a time.